Put all please stamp the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Call a meeting to order at 7:00 P.M. Okay, start off with item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There are no public comments, we will close the public comment, we will move on to item number four. Approve minutes from the September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, regular meetings, have a motion to do so?
So hold.
Motion by Karen. Second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Uh, the chair votes aye, motion passes, uh, four, excuse me, five zero one, there's no call of extension. Item number five, approve minutes from the October first, two thousand fifteen ordinance committee meeting, have a motion to do so? Second by Len.
Second.
Second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, chair votes aye, motion passes, six zero. Item number six, first electors report, uh, keep the first electors report short tonight because we have a lot to do, but...
I just want to go over some information I received from the finance office today. Uh, the year end town budget has an unaudited surplus of six thousand ninety-one dollars. Now, it's very different than what we've talked about in the past, I want to break that down for you. Uh, revenues for the fiscal year were fifty-four million, four hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred nine versus a budget amount of fifty-four million, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, excuse me, four hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-one, which is a forty-seven thousand, seven hundred, forty-two dollars less than budget. Revenue shortfalls were fifty thousand for use of fund balance, eighty-one thousand, one seventy-seven, fund balance transfer for snow plowing, sixty thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars state grant shortfall, and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars for net miscellaneous shortfalls. For on the revenue surplus side, our tax collection was one hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars above, uh, budget. On the expenditure side, fifty-four, uh, same numbers, um, we ended up being fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars less than budget. Uh, expenditure surpluses were as follows, ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars from the police department, seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars from the public works department, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight from trash hauling, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars from elderly services, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars from recreation department, and an additional ninety thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars in various departments. The expenditure deficit for the board of education was three hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So when we had talked about the workers' compensation shortfall and what we would need to do, um, the surplus on the municipal side was able to absorb the entire board of education, three hundred twenty-three thousand dollars shortfall, leaving us with a, a surplus total for the entire town of Seymour of six thousand ninety-one dollars. Now again, that's unaudited, we expect to have those numbers by the end of the year, but Doug feels very confident that these should be good numbers, so I wanted to pass those on to you folks. Okay, item number seven, discussion with the Seymour High School softball field committee. I don't know who's going to be doing it, Chris is going to be doing the speaking, so come on up. Chris, if you could talk into the microphone, just so everyone can hear. I don't know, the rest of you guys want to come up too, or no? And I think Jim's gonna help, Jim's gonna help out as well. So Chris, just for the record, name and address.
My name is Chris Adamo, and it's four cross. Address and visual aids, and I'll drop in.
Thank you. I can pass them down. Okay.
First, I just, I just want to recognize, um, a number of people that want to be there. Wonderful things for us in supporting the project. Representative Chance Conroy is very instrumental in helping to secure the grant that we received from the state of Connecticut. They have tremendous support from our first elector, Kirk Mill. Well, the board of education and the board of selectmen, it was about a year and a half ago, I think, when we first approached, uh, both boards about raising the money and, uh, doing this project, so. It's been a tremendous effort of the project team. Last April, I had help from, uh, Rick Belden and Christine Seriak in kind of skoping out the project. We sat down and talked about what we could do with the field, and then we came up with a budgetary number to go to the state of Connecticut with, and, uh, and it was, was approved. And then just, I'd like to recognize the players, past and present, through hard work, dedication, um, and the way they represent our community helped make the state believe that it is a legal project. Now, basically, we've received the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars grant for the town of Seymour to renovate the softball field. And I've got a list of the items, the significant items that were going to be addressing. The lighting, and I'm going to do a little bit more of a, a comparison now in a minute, um, with, uh, LED as halogen, because we did ask for both options to be included. But we've got, uh, four towers that will be going up, and sixteen photo pictures, and there will be a halogen lighting out there. There's going to be permanent closed fencing, there's going to be adding lizard creatures to both ends for pictures to go on up in, resurfacing the daddy cage, uh, replacing infield material, reedged the infield and outfield transition, adding the press box for storage, and then updating, uh, signage, welcome sign, um, and then some banners that recognize all the teams that call that field home, which is the high school, uh, Seymour tradition, and the girls' home. We'll, um, second hand out there that we have is a cost comparison. I know there's a movement nationwide already to LED lighting, um, with, uh, an athletic field is not a place at this time for, um, LED lighting to make sense, um, it's a, it's a high volume, low u- low usage facility, uh, and we, we went ahead and had both for good. Over the twenty-five years, and the union twenty-five years of the total cost, um, kind of like the project could be, we'll get a twenty-five year warranty for the halogen lighting fixtures. But basically, the halogen lighting cost will be about a hundred and twenty-seven, hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars over the life of the the LED mounting, the hundred and fifty-eight pounds down. And again, there's a twenty-five year warranty for the halogen lighting, LED only comes with a ten year, um, warranty. The lights themselves will last, but there's a lot of, uh, computer components with the LED lighting base, so there's kind of a hidden cost there after ten years, that's not included in the detailed analysis that we, uh, that we see. But basically, um, it would be, a break even point is one thousand, four hundred and fifty hours of use continually, and, and the more basic and average softball field, it costs about two hundred hours of, of, uh, those, those numbers will provide a much better. So basically, that's the project, we've got a map there, um, I'd be happy to point out some of the details if necessary, but, um,
Yeah, just with regards to the, uh, lighting cost, one of the things I'd asked Chris to do with our push for LED lighting across town, I'd asked him to do a comparison to see how it would look on the softball field. So I'm glad to hear that you've done that, and it makes sense, so it fits within your, your project, because I know had you had to go LED, it would have changed the scope of the work that you needed to do. So, um, I've sat in on a couple of meetings and had some conversations, so I'm comfortable, but does anyone have any questions on the scope of the work itself? Anything that they're not sure about?
I may have missed it last time, how long will the project take?
Once we get the, the proposal out there, each section of the work is only a couple weeks, so, and most of it can happen completely, so if we get the biz out there, which we're pretty much ready to go, um, and get entirely contractors, it can be done in months, right?
So will it be ready by the next, in the...
We're expecting it will get done very quickly.
Did you say, did you say when you're going to break the ground?
We're hoping to be, because the first game that they would scare that, uh, come to, that's the expectation. Most of the work can be done by that, so we're, that's we get the purpose, we're, 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 we're...
Anyone else with any questions, comments? Someone's comfortable? Good luck. Okay, excellent. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Discussion and possible action regarding road update and WPCA bid. Motion by Anne Marie.
Second.
Second by Al, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero, and personally on note, Nicole's arrival at seven oh nine. Uh, so Jim, uh, excuse me, next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding the road program and WPCA bid package. Let's go with the roads.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Jim Gallagher, the town engineer. Uh, I've handed out to you a, a brief summary of, uh, where the, uh, road projects are. Um, just a, a couple of, uh, you know, basic things, the, the heat and place contractor, if you've, if you've noticed, has moved in, moved out and completed his work. Um, he only, he was only here for, for barely two weeks, and, uh, and he was gone. Those roads that, where the heat and place was performed, the next step is to have all the, the catch basin tops replaced, that's in process right now. I'm sure people don't realize that there are a hundred and thirty catch basin tops that need to be replaced on the, on those roads, so this, uh, it'll take a couple of weeks to do. And then ONG Industries is, um, is ready to follow and do a one inch and a half overlay on all of those roads. They're tentatively scheduled for the week of the nineteenth, um, but depending on, uh, on how the rest of their projects go, they, um, that's, that's their schedule at this particular point. In contract two, that's the area right now where the, where they're reclaiming and repa- are getting ready to repave a new street in Hill Street, and some repairs over on Caslow, uh, they're reclaiming this week, uh, they anticipate, uh, paving the, either the end of this week and the beginning, or all of next week. They're also following up with drainage piping on He- on Hind Street, which is off of South Main Street. And, um, again, we'll move to reclaiming that area right afterwards, they've already taken out the, uh, the aprons. They always take the aprons out early, I'm not sure why, but that's just their MO. And then they're going to go to Elm Street after that, and that would, uh, that'll close that out. Contract three and contract five, those areas have, are basically complete, the reclaiming is done, the repaving is done, the a- the, uh, curving is done, the aprons are done. There are a couple of sidewalks up on Johnson, the area of Johnson that have to be done. And there's, uh, topswell and seeding, that's, uh, that's going to start with and be completed within the next week, uh, week to ten days. Um, if you've been on Colony Street, uh, this week, you'll see that they're bringing in the drainage that starts down at Sockman's Pond and goes up to Belvedere Terrace, uh, they expect that that drainage will be, will be finished by the end of next week. And then once, uh, ONG comes in to do their paving, I'm going to have them pave all the way from, uh, Colony Street Extension all the way down to, all the way down to Main Street, and so that'll button that up. And that's, that's, uh, that's the schedule for the, at least the next two, two to three weeks.
Hey Jim, just two, I guess just two questions, number one, Maiden Lane was a concern for the folks on this board?
Yeah.
So where does Maiden stand in our...
All right, Maiden Lane, I should, uh, what do you mean, another two weeks?
Yes.
I'll, I'll bring a, a full scale plan for Maiden Lane for, for the, I've been, you know, tied up with these, with these, uh, streets, but I'll have a full scale plan for Maiden Lane. My intention is to, is to have one of the contractors, that when they finish up these, these contracts they work on now, go over to Maiden Lane, reclaim and repave that area and get a new, uh, to get a new surface down there, widen the road a little bit, uh, make it a little bit more passable, have a place at the top where they can put, uh, where they can push the snow. That's a big problem for the people with two or three houses at the end of the street there, that there's no place for them to plow, get up to the end of the street, there's no place there for them to, to deposit the snow, they end up leaving it right in front of their driveways. Causes a big problem for them as far as snow removal on an individual basis.
Okay. Uh, and then the other thing was Gary Park, we put, we put about twenty-five thousand aside for Gary Park to have that parking lot paved.
Um, all right, let me see what, uh, let me see, I can give you a report on that for the next meeting, I gotta, uh, I gotta see if this, the, the, the reclaiming process takes a bit of time, and, and these guys are, uh, reclaiming all over the state at this time, so I gotta try and get somebody who can schedule it and get it done, I'll get a, I'll get a, uh, affirmative time for, for the next meeting.
And budget wise, how are we looking?
Uh, excellent, um, you know, virtually every one of the projects has come out under budget, um, you know, in particular, the, uh, heat and place was, uh, I think, or it came out about sixty thousand dollars underneath what the, uh, the budgeted item, which was, um, you know, a, a bit higher than their bid, so their, so their price come out on less than, even than what their bid was. Um, the price of, uh, the bituminous has gone down. When I first started estimating this, this project, the, the price of bituminous was in the, uh, around a hundred, around a hundred dollars, it's dropped down to, I think, eighty-two at this point, because of the price of oil, and, uh, so there's, there's a lot of savings going on with that. Uh, so we're well within our budget. Including the, the projected work from Maiden Lane.
Maiden Lane, okay. All right, so what questions do board members have for Jim? Glenn?
Yeah, uh, just to kind of get an idea of overall scope, and I know we talked about this a while back, but I'm trying to remember what the number was. Approximately how many roads, what's the percentage of the actual roads that we're redoing right now? Townwide?
Yeah, percentage, I don't know, I do know that it's somewheres between thirty-eight and forty-three roads in the entire town.
Okay, okay. And, um, out of the thirty-eight, forty-three, whatever it is, how many are we actually taking all the way down to the dirt, basically, and starting over again? I know some are based, basically, the top surface, and some are...
Most of the roads were reclaimed, which is, which is a full grind of the material. The, the roads that we're doing, the heat and place, are more of the, the main roads, Davis Road, Botched Road, Canfield, uh, Bonning, Berchwood, those roads there are the ones that have, most of those are the ones that had the heat and place.
Okay.
Heat and place, um, it was only used on selected roads that had enough bituminous thickness to start. And then being able to do that, what, what that does is that takes a, um, you know, uh, I'll, I'll use the phrase beat up, wearing surface road, and then heats it in place and makes it into a sound base surface. And then you put the new wearing surface on top of it, and that way you don't lose that, that sufficient thickness in the first place. That's the benefit of it, and the other benefit is you only have to put down an inch and a half instead of four inches. Plus, why, it's a big saving.
Sure, sure. I know some of the, there have been some questions from residents, particularly in the areas where, where they are resurfacing. Some of the trees have kind of looked like they burned out.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that, or I should say, can you address what's going to happen with that?
Uh, yeah, you know, this was something that we talked about early on with the heat and place. The, uh, the heat and place, as, as, as is defined, is a very hot process. The, uh, a lot of the trees that overhang the, the roads are, are, uh, not burnt, people think that they're burnt, there's no fire come out, it's exhausted. So what, what will happen is that the, they, they become dehydrated, they, they look like they're dead, but in the spring, they all come back.
Okay.
Yeah, once the, and I, and I, believe me, I've had some people that come out and say, look at my tree.
Yeah.
I understand that, but they're, the, um, in the spring, once the spring comes out, they, they revegetate.
Okay. And, uh, finally, you know, are we, when, when is our projected finish date for the year? Approximately?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's about a month to do all the rest of the stuff itself.
So we should be still within that range where we're not going to be hindered by, unless there's some kind of a crazy storm?
Oh yeah, no, we're, we're, you know, no, September, October, very early parts of November are fine.
Okay.
You know, it, it depends on what you're doing too, we're going to be doing overlay, and they're doing the overlay, you know, they're, they'll start the second half of this month, they'll be, they'll be done plenty of time.
Okay.
And then the, uh, the roads where they're doing the final reclaiming, uh, they're putting down four inches, so, you know, those, those things make a big difference. It's a lot different than chips here. The result is, the processes and the environmental constraints are a lot different than chips here.
Okay, thank you.
So Jim, that was my concern, I just wanted to make sure everything's going to be done before the weather starts getting ugly, and then we have issues with the ceiling, and then it peels up and, and all that stuff.
Yeah, I, um, you know, the, the asphalt goes down at three hundred and seventy-five degrees, so, so as long as the ground isn't frozen, doesn't have frost in it, and then temperature really doesn't, doesn't affect it. The, the difference between that and chip ceiling is, is, is that much thickness, and that's the big difference.
Okay.
Go for the next one?
I have a question. And then the over, but, once you put down those four inches, the overnight temperature doesn't affect it?
No, actually, the, this time, this time of year, it's actually better than it is in the summer, because what you really want, you want it to cool as fast as possible. Once you get it set and rolled, it's ideal to get it to, 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 to cool as fast as possible, as long as it's not frozen, because, um, you know, that, that, that minimizes the impacts of the, of the, you know, the trash trucks and the, you know, cement trucks, those types of things make an, make an tire marks and real marks.
So if we have an, an unseasonably cold freeze at night, that won't affect it?
No, because what they do, Nicole, is, is if there's a bad weather day, then they just don't pay. You know, that's one of the other benefits of, of this process, is that if, um, um, you know, if you have free rain days, they just don't pay for those free rain days. If they come in, and, and this happened with me a couple of years ago, they had, uh, two or three frost days, where they just didn't pave, and then the whole month of November after that, the weather was perfect for paving, you can just go right back to it.
Thank you.
I just have one question, with regard to contract three and contract five, where you talk about putting down topsoil and seed, isn't this the wrong time of the year to plant grass?
Actually, this is not the, actually, this is actually a pretty good time of year, we're going to get it done before the end of October. But the summertime is actually the worst time to put down seed, to, uh, topsoil and seed, because there's not enough moisture in the air to get the grass to grow. The, uh, the best time is between September, September first and October third.
Okay, and we're going to make that?
Well, they're going to make that, and in the years that don't make it, you have a one-year guarantee, so if they put down topsoil and seed this year,
Okay.
you have a one-year guarantee, they have to come back in the spring, if it doesn't take then, they have to come back in the fall. And, and just a, a reminder of one other thing financially, you have a hundred percent, uh, payment bond and a hundred percent performance bond. So if these contracts, I'll just pick one, this, this is about seven hundred thousand dollars, you have almost one and a half million dollars in bonding that are held, and you have the option to hold those for up to a year. Road jobs like this, I generally recommend that you hold it at least nine months, but all the way through at least one full winter season.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions with regards to the roads? Begin? Okay. Jim, if you want to move on now to the WPCA.
Yeah, what, uh, what we did, procedurally what we did, uh, the town did, is they put out a, a request, let's let you know. They had a request for qualifications from, uh, operation and man- people who do operation and management of, of raised water treatment, answering the animal treatment system. We, after, when the qualifications were submitted to the town, um, we reviewed the qualifications, we found the two of the people who submitted, and they happened to be the only two that submitted, were qualified to actually physically be able to operate and manage the sewage treatment. At that time, we did, we defined a very specific scope of services and asked them to provide us with prices, a pay price to, to operate, and a price to operate, and you can assist. The, um, only one of the companies, Violia, who is your current operator, um, submitted a, a price to you, their, their price is actually on the last page, it's one million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, round numbers, annually, and, uh, just to, uh, give you an idea of what, what that is in comparison to what you're doing right now, their current fee is one million, two hundred and seventy dollars. The increase in cost that they are, they have here is for what is a, a non-funded, a non-funded state mandate for phosphorus removal, and it's starting, you people have to start complying, I think it's legal first. So they had to put in a number to be able to, to throw the chemical to do that work, the electricity to run the pumps and the, and the meters, and the, uh, slug removal that is caused by this, uh, by this phosphorus removal process. Current, uh, so you have in front of you what their price is. Um, in, in this package, there is a, uh, a, uh, an escalation clause that is, that's standard for this type of operation, and, uh, we need to now sit down with Violia and understand all the elements of that escalation clause to make sure that those, those, uh, those costs are, are, uh, are real and viable, real and necessary for the town, and, uh, that's it, except for us to boo, we're sitting now with Violia and discussing the, the costs for that.
Okay, does anybody have any questions with regards to this? This process? Um, at this point, we're coming to the very, getting near the finish line. So, uh, Jim and myself, Rich, Ray Seuss will sit down, John Lavulsi with, uh, Violia, and have these discussions and see what we can come up with, and...
Just, just as a, as a, you know, so you understand kind of the, the, what the numbers really mean. Violia, um, their company predecessor, gave, uh, gave the town a number twenty years ago, somewheres along twenty years ago, and, and through the escalation that is, that was negotiated at that time, they're only charging sixty thousand dollars for the whole year, more than they used, and that's, that's, that's pretty good. I was very much encouraged by the numbers. Of course, the devil's in the detail, so we have to work out the deal.
Right. So again, any, any issues, questions, discussion with Jim regarding this? No? Okay, perfect. Jim, thank you very much. Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding warning of the bid for Seymour Public Library, partial roof replacement and community center boiler. All right, in your packets, you have, uh, two things, there are actually, one was in your packet, one was handed out tonight. Uh, the first one we're going to go through is the, um, drawing a blank here, sorry, okay, here we go. So you should have in your packets, I apologize, I drew a blank, uh, from Mike Marsnick, from the permanent building committee, with their recommendation, says Kurt, on behalf of the permanent building committee, during our most recent meeting on August twenty-seventh, a discussion was held on the upcoming purchase of the new steam boiler for the community center. We had been advised that the price between the two competitive boilers, HB Smith and Burnham, are less than two hundred dollars apart. The discussion involved the future ability of the town to get the boiler purchased, delivered, and installed in time before winter conditions caused the town to invest in temporary heat. In unanimous vote, the committee recommended that the town purchase the Burnham boiler due to the following conditions. Uh, the Burnham sales rep lives in Oxford and has worked with town officials on other installations before and has assisted installations. Having the local rep will allow the town of Seymour to have a direct contact if there are any difficulty with the delivery of the unit in time for the winter startup. Local town staff have been successful with Burnham installations before, including the town of Seymour. Fair to deliver the unit in time will cost the town significantly more money than any cost savings on the bid. Finally, because of this, because this is a steam and hot water boiler, uh, changeover from steam after the initial installation will be difficult, and having a local rep will be critical to the changeover success. If you or the board has any questions, that being our board, feel free to contact any board member for their attendance at a board meeting to participate in discussion, signed by Mike. So, uh, what they're asking for at this point is to go with Burnham. Just spare me one second. Now you should have received a, let's see. Just spare me one second. You should have received, handed out tonight, that's why there's a little bit of confusion. Um, this, a letter from Don Smith. Said, uh, regarding bid opening results, Seymour Community Center Boiler Replacement. Okay, this is Dear Selectman, just got that tonight? Should've just been handed? On October sixth, two thousand fifteen, the town received two bids as a result of a rebid for the above referenced project. See the attached bid tabulation sheet for a summary of bids. After review of the submission of the low bidder, West State Mechanicals, we find the bid to be complete at a reasonable price. Accordingly, is our opinion of the town, best interest would be served by awarding the above referenced project to West State Mechanical in the amount of one... to West State Mechanical in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. We trust this information allows the board to make an informed decision on this matter. Please feel free. That's signed, Don Smith. Now, the reason why I gave you that one as well is we're talking about two things. We're talking about the boiler itself, as well as the mechanical work that needs to be done. So they are, though they are two separate things, they're one project. So we're going to do two. So we, the boiler has been taken care of, because that was under the necessary bid amount. We received the quotes and that was addressed. And then the one fifty-five, seven hundred is the money needed for the system itself. So Rich, we need to do two separate motions, correct? All right, so the first motion then will be to accept, a motion to accept the recommendation of the Permanent Building Committee and to award the boiler for the Seymour, excuse me, the steam boiler, or purchase, excuse me, of the steam boiler for the community center to burn him. I have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion on this part of it? And again, that refers back to the letter from the Permanent Building Committee.
I can say that I fully agree with this. I know this customer service rep that works for Burnham, a very reputable man, very hardworking man, and he will serve the town well. He's made a career of doing this and he knows, he knows what he's doing. So I agree with their assessment of having this Burnham and a rep from Oxford.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Paul. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay, the next part of this then is to award the mechanical work for the Seymour Community Center Boiler Replacement to Westside Mechanical in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Just under discussion, I should say, as recommended by project engineer, Don Smith. So I apologize for that. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? And again, there is a, attached to this, what was handed out, is a handwritten sheet from the bids that were received. As you can see, we received two bids, one for one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred, the other for two hundred and six thousand, nine hundred. Okay, if there's no questions with that, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. And then the last one, as part of your packet, there should be another letter from Don Smith with regards to the Seymour Library Roof Repairs. And I'll read that into the record. Says, Dear Selectmen, on September 24th, 2015, the town received five bids for the above referenced project. See the attached bid tabulation sheet for summary of the bids. After review of the submissions of the low bidder, Skittle Town Roofing, and the second low bidder, FJ Dayhill Company Incorporated, we find both bids to be complete and at a reasonable price. Accordingly, is our opinion that the town's best interest would be served by awarding the base bid and add alternate number one to FJ Dayhill Company in the amount of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. We trust this information allows the board to make the informed decision on this matter. Please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Don Smith. So you can see the tabulation sheet in the back. So at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to accept town engineers, Don Smith, excuse me, project engineer, Don Smith's recommendation for the library roof repairs and award it to FJ Daly Company Incorporated. Dayhill, what'd I say? Oh, sorry, Dayhill, I apologize. For a base bid and add alternate number one in the amount, total amount of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Well, I struggled with that one, didn't I? Wow, sorry about that. Okay, item number nine, discussion and take possible action regarding Tom Jensen tax abatement. On your packets, you should have a letter from John Cronin, Chief of the Seymour Fire Department. Says, Dear Tax Collector's Office, it has come to our attention that Thomas Jensen tax abatement amount was incorrect on our 2014 tax abatement list. After going through records, it was deemed that he should be receiving a thousand dollar instead of five hundred dollars. If you could please adjust records accordingly, it would be greatly appreciated. If there are any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact the fire department clerk, and the number is listed there. Thank you, John Cronin. Okay, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the request from Fire Chief John Cronin to change the 2014 tax abatement list amount for Thomas Jensen from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding reimbursement for Mike Markowski's claim. On your packets, you have a, some information, and an email particularly. Says Tony, this is an email being sent to Tony Cussera, Director of Operations. Please review attached for right front suspension damage to my vehicle. This occurred on the morning of March 20th. Going to pick up Bill Peck for a land use class in Middletown. Driving up a large hill in Bellevue, unknown to me, large pothole covered by snow, Mike. So he is filing a claim for the damage to his car, which was done by a pothole. The total amount of the damage, and you can see on the back page, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Now, this damage was done as Mike was picking up Bill Peck and they were going to a land use class in Middletown on behalf of the town of Seymour.
My only question would be, why did it take so long to come to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was, this was in March.
Happened in March 20th.
Yeah, Mike wasn't necessarily aware. He sent this in May. I don't know all the background on the timeframe, right, do you? So what is the pleasure of the board?
It happened in March, right? I understand it got buried on Tony's desk, but the estimate says, the estimate date is May.
Correct.
It's gonna get, something that got buried on the twenty.
So you didn't repair it for a month?
That's the way it's looking, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, according to.
Front ball joint.
Would the car be drivable? I don't know that much about cars.
Oh, I can't answer that question, can I? I know less about cars than you.
It's a 2003 Dodge pickup with almost a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, so that's why the repair isn't that overly expensive.
I mean, do we need, do we want more information? For the delay?
I'm not as concerned about.
It's got something to do with the tire, Karen.
Oh, okay.
I'm not as concerned about the delay. It's been confirmed that he was on his way to go get Bill to go to the land use class, right?
Correct, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, so I mean, if that's confirmed, I don't have an issue with that.
Was this submitted to insurance and rejected?
Yes. That is my understanding, yes, it was rejected.
Okay, because that's why, I mean, it was submitted to the town clerk in May, and we haven't seen it since May. So that was why, why did it take so long to get from the clerk's office to us? Obviously, it's gone through the insurance process and they rejected.
I would say yes to that, but I would also, with worry, there's a good chance that this was on Tony's desk for a little bit.
And we don't know why it was rejected.
The standard insurance company rejection. They seem to reject. Yeah, I think they're first.
Because it's covered in snow.
Right, if we know about it, then it, I didn't know if there's something.
What's the town policy? If we don't know about it.
Well, if the insurance company doesn't cover it, then it's up to us if we want to pay for it or not.
He's in the course of town business.
Right, so we should cover it. So I think we should.
It's not like he's going out to dinner.
I mean, we would cover it as an employee or as a regular citizen driving on the street. That's, you know, we make the decisions. We've done that in the past, so. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion or? What motion are you making? All right, so. Okay, in the amount of eight hundred fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents? Okay, so we have that motion made by Anne Marie. Is there a second? Second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding resolution for borrowing expenditure authorization for upcoming town projects. At this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to table as Doug Gillette has not finalized the necessary authorization. Motion by Karen, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item number 12, discussion, take possible action regarding National Diaper Week Proclamation. We have two things in your packet. The first is a letter. That was sent to me by Megan Tarby, who is the Executive Director of the Connecticut Partnership for Children. So you can see that in there. And to go along with that, we have a proclamation that I'd like to read into the record. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas, national surveys report that one in three mothers experiencing diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. Excuse me, and whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of fifty diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas, diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers. Therefore, obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas, the supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas, the people of Seymour recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunities for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas, Seymour is proud to be home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. Now, therefore be resolved that I, W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman of the Town of Seymour, do hereby proclaim the week of September 28th through October 4th, 2015, as diaper needs awareness week in the Town of Seymour, and encourage the citizens of Seymour to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Seymour. And. Environments. Okay, all right, I didn't think that was a word, but I guess it is. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the proclamation as presented? Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 13, discussion, take possible action regarding uses of LOSEF funds in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars for the 2015 Pothole Killer Project. You have a memo to the board from Anthony Cussera, Director of Operations. Says, Dear Board of Selectman Members, as a part of our 2015 road reclamation and restoration project, the town has pooled our resources to improve and maintain the priority roads as defined by the town engineer and the public works department. We have used all available funds and allocated the portion of maintenance specifically designated as the most suitable use for the pothole killer option to be funded through a LOSEF allocation. Therefore, we are asking for a formal approval to use thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars in LOSEF funds for this purpose. Sincerely, Anthony Cussera. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the spending of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars in LOSEF funds for the Pothole Killer for 2015. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion?
What is the balance in LOSEF, you know, even after taking this out, more or less?
Uh, LOSEF has about sixty thousand.
Okay.
Do you perceive this as an issue, Kurt?
Do I see, what is?
Approving this and having sixty left.
Oh, not at all.
Plenty, right?
Plenty. And that sixty is unallocated. We have a lot of that money encumbered for other projects already. So the sixty thousand is what's unencumbered at this point.
Does this already have?
Yes. Oh, God, we did, we had three weeks' worth. But you can't say it by street, because it went from street to street, you know, some, small sum, a lot, more than we did last year.
And what did we spend last year, Kurt?
Last year was a little over thirty, off the top of my head. You know, we had gotten an introductory price of about eighteen, but we used more material. So that tacked on an extra twelve thousand or so. This year, we went in for the full three-week package, for lack of a better term. That's right where we came in. But we did use a little bit more material than even the three-week package offer. So that's where we came in, the thirty-eight four. And I would expect that we will use the Pothole Killer every year going forward. Okay, if there's no other questions and comments, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item number 14, discussion and take possible action regarding Knight of Columbus, 165 Main Street LLC License Agreement. Mr. Beterla.
If I may, Mr. Miller, ladies and gentlemen, if you all recall, probably two or three meetings ago, I believe it was a town engineer was reporting on the, perhaps it was the first selectman, on the status of parking lot reconstruction, some of the work from the administration. There was a bit of a dispute, at least that was what was reported to us. Kurt Miller, myself, Chris Steve Kulis, and John Fanato Ness, in an effort to resolve it, excuse me, quickly determined it wasn't a dispute, there was sort of a misunderstanding. Back in 1983, we had an arrangement for a lease, believe it or not, an entitled lease, to deal with the various rights of the two parties to the parking lot. Rather than create a new lease, we created a parking license agreement, even a lease per se. Situation, you haven't had one since 1983, and we're really talking about a small area there. The Knights of Columbus Street over 165 Main Street LLC, they've been very cooperative in the meantime. While we have been moving this thing forward, to get it here tonight for a vote, they haven't been holding on to construction. We've been moving forward. From what I understand, the entrance is being placed where we may have been stated. And Mr. Fanato, thought it was a better place, and that was the right place. In fact, he had concerns that we were going to do what we did him want to do. So let's just say that it was a very productive meeting. So we have this parking license agreement. It sort of tracks some of the language from the original lease and that we reserve a bunch of spaces. We make a nominal payment of three hundred and fifty dollars, which is essentially, will cover their taxes for their portion of the property. That's basically it. We have cross-agreement provisions. And I have voted this with Chris Kulis, Kulas, and we're in agreement with this, on the changes that we made.
Let me just say, I would recommend it. I haven't gotten an approval from the board yet. Just by way of background for a little here and there, it's like the rough council. The credit council of Columbus does not want the local council to own profit, hence 165 Main Street. The members of board directors are all Knights of Columbus, who are active in Seymour, but they are separate entities. They met in Monday, September 28th. We've gone over these changes, these are the changes we proposed. I don't foresee a problem, but I got them today. I kind of attacked those by the way. You don't anticipate any problem, these changes, I can recommend this to council, and we'll recommend it.
With that, I would think if we do a motion, we'll authorize you to come into this agreement in the anticipation that the board will move back to prove it, and then they'll be executing it as well. If, for some reason, this kind of actually was rough with facts, which I don't foresee, I'll be put down. And just, I don't foresee a problem when we can. I have been able to call school morning, because of my office. Mr. Bill Jerks, who you know is actually the president of one sixty-five Main Street. But if that's a thing, there, I think that's a good idea.
What questions do we have?
Doc, you had indicated that the issues with regard to the entrance and everything else had been returned to, well, actually, you didn't say returned to the original state, but what is the, where are they going to be located? Are they going to be the first iteration that we saw, or the second iteration, which was presented to us, I think, about a month and a half ago?
The original.
The original.
The original.
The original was the good one, and the second iteration was a bit cooperative, and we looked at some of the-
One entrance.
It was going to be right out on a sixty-seven.
It's a two entrance version.
Okay, so the safer, the safer option.
The safer, the two, there may be a slight change to it. We may lose a spot or two. One of the things we're talking about is circular drive, but that's something that Jonathan was working on with Mike Corbal.
So what's the total number of parking spaces we're going to gain, should this move forward?
I believe it's fourteen.
Fourteen.
But until I see the final thing, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty, but I believe it's going to be fourteen.
Just out of curiosity, I'm not an attorney, obviously, so forgive me if this is a silly question, but in section four C, under term and occupancy, it indicates that the licenser and the licensee can terminate the license at any point for any reason whatsoever, or no reason whatsoever. Is that a normal thing? Is that common in these types of agreements?
You had it in your old lease.
It was there before, so we're sticking it back there again. So the question, I guess, what comes down to from a practical standpoint is, what if, for some unforeseen reason, there's some kind of disagreement down the road? Can the, what's it, the three sixty, one sixty-five Main Street LLC revoke the license, and then we lose parking? How does that work?
Yes.
They lose access to their parking spaces.
Yeah, so I have a feeling that we're-
It's a mutually beneficial situation, but it's just kind of a strange circumstance.
Very strange. It's worked reasonably well, I guess.
Look, yeah, I mean, it worked reasonably well, as council's informed me. The only time the party's ever entered into a lease agreement is nineteen eighty-three, with your term from the father's.
I have a feeling this-
Thirty years, it's worked perfect.
I would add only to that, the remaining portion of parking lot is actually owned by the Connecticut Parking Transportation.
Right.
They entered in the lease agreement roughly the same time. I think that term was six years. I won't even speculate as to whether or not anybody's looked at that. But in any event, it's been working. It's just evolved. The Knights actually have a much smaller Main Street, with some issues about using a building and reserving that area at certain times. So I'll do things like a cool front.
Sure, I saw it, yeah.
And you saw that. And there's also a hot building, the future of financing, which is very difficult, and they are making it more accessible, or handicapped, or following up in the elevator. Also, you can try, so I don't think that's going to happen overnight. And let's see, I mean, on fifty-five, I don't do more time. There's every dispute, and we have to talk about it.
It's highly unlikely, I just, I saw it in there, I kind of, I wanted to ask a question, so, thank you.
Yep, so, I mean, so what is the board's pleasure?
I moved that we approved the license agreement. Or I should say, I moved that we did the authorization to, in terms of the-
Second. Motion made by Len, second by Paul. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number fifteen.
Chairman, before you go on, just to make the record perfectly clear, my name is Stephen Pulis, my district is Justin, twelve Main Street. I am here tonight as house of the local work, house of fifty-three, and I just want to say, if you think, can I just do an ad hoc for the record?
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so item number fifteen, discussion, take possible action regarding workers' compensation interservice fund. Rich, you're back-to-back, two in a row. We also have Rick Belvin here from the, our Associate Superintendent of Operations and Finance, and three or four other things, here to help out as well, so.
As you know, the town auditors made a recommendation that the town establish new permanent municipal fund for the purpose of paying and providing workers' compensation benefits over the time. It would be a fund of contributions from both the town and the board. We put together a draft, which could be an ordinance, if you choose to make it an ordinance, that they would win the packet. The one question that the ninety-day period in section C, it probably is the right number, because some folks thought it was too short, and some folks thought it was too long. So, I worked with Doug Stantown several dozen million years ago, and next to his definition of a seven. Everyone believed it happy, or a little bit sad, it must be a good government, you know? And I, we take ninety days because it felt right. Some people thought it should be a hundred twenty, some people thought it should be smaller. So, I, I'm just pointing that out, because we're not wetted anything. The feedback we've got from our finance people is that this seems to work for everyone. But if it's wrapped, then we're throwing it at everyone to accommodate the contribution.
I guess the only issue I have, again, is the ninety days. I actually think it should be longer, because budgets are put together, I mean, they're presented in February. You know, I'd have concern with ninety days, because that would technically be April first. And at that point, we're just about ready to go to the public hearing, so. I'd rather see it earlier as opposed to later. We can always tweak it, I mean, Rick, you can jump in, but I think we get the estimates. I can't speak to the board of ed side, but on our side, we get them earlier. So I don't know what your, yeah, so, I don't know what your comfort level is.
I raised the issue, I'm sure, the issue, which is to wrap up, and I'll comment back. I was one of the ones that advocated-
Longer.
No longer periods to have the whole inter滴滴 process. It's important slash guideline. At the end of the day, though, where we're going to have the most accurate information, is provided for by the process. We have the beginning of fall, and then one, and early spring.
Right.
So, if we find that that beginning of spring, after according to our budgets, that we've changed another sixty, or we've changed another budget limit,
Right, another one.
So, I think the ninety days is okay, you know? It's clearly we're going to have to go, have to write around, and everything else. So like you help the church.
Mm-hmm.
We get a lot of the number, and there's the changes, you can go back and adjust it.
Right, okay. Rick, how did, or, Rich, sorry. How does this address defining exactly what needs to be put in? Because let's say we're ten years down the road, and one side or the other, I want to, this is not sides, but the sides, instead of putting in three hundred thousand, are only going to put in a hundred thousand. Because their plan, the reserves have been built up to, let's say, five hundred thousand, so how do we address that?
This doesn't mandate a certain amount. This mandates reasonable. Folks who are going to be making the decision, are going to have to look at things that create production, and some sense. To determine, you know, what's a sufficient amount, on an annual basis. I mean, there's no lock-in point.
Well, it's similar to pension payments, that we see a lot of towns have issues now. They should be putting in X, and a lot of times, they put in nowhere near X.
But that's a little different case. Do you know why that's different? Because you can, you can, it's almost mathematical to search, I mean, what those pension benefits are, for the universal retirement, you can project, other than, for this case, disability, you can project, for most people's time.
Mm-hmm.
And in actuarial, you can put a hard number on what that's going to be. You're, the only thing you have to go on, which is important, not minimal, is you have a claim system. You have a claim system. So you know what you've been putting in, or spending on an area, and they, you know it's insufficient. Occasionally, some, it's not going to be sufficient, but along, some, you know, some things, some come along, that's going to require some special appropriations.
And I'm just, just here, following up on that. This is number one, the pension place has sort of came down the road a little bit. Here, the tax code has catch up with you. You don't fund this, and things, maybe you have to pay. So, it's a one-year decision on somebody's part, because it's like, that health insurance, and self-insure. Somebody's got to put that money in. So, it's a one-year decision on one side or the other, the next year it's going to come back.
Well, see, and that's what my point was. It's one side or the other, so let's say, the town's required to put into, recommended, the town puts in two hundred thousand, recommended the board of ed puts in a hundred thousand. Board of ed, and we have a four hundred thousand dollar reserve. Board of ed puts in their hundred, the town says, we're not putting any money in. The town has, or the municipal, municipal side. How do you defend that, that one side now is, I mean, it's all the taxpayers' money, but I'm just concerned about down the road, what happens, because I can see, and I'm not, certainly not picking on the board of ed, but the board of ed requests one point two million, they get five hundred thousand. They turn around and say, hey, we don't have enough money, and they don't fund it, because they say, hey, there's money in the reserve. I just don't want any issues or contention down the road. So can we say something like the ten-year rolling average, or if the fund, if the reserve gets to a certain level, then each side is able to pull out, I don't know, twenty-five percent, something like that? That's all, that's my, I'm not concerned with the present players. I'm concerned with what could happen five years down the road, ten years down the road, when inevitably, everybody plays games with the budget at some point. And it'll be long after, Rick and I are going. That's all I'm saying.
Tell me something about it, just, you're connected, consult on it, if you're going to come up with some more.
Just something that kind of, even if there's a minimum required-
I agree.
-contribution or something.
Minimum amount they have to put in, looking at that claim's history.
We put in, we do what, three fifty? Yeah, and you guys are one thirty?
One fifty-five.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the town spends three fifty?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have cops, public works. More physically demanding jobs, generally. But again, I mean, and you know, we experienced, you know, on the board of ed side, a very unexpected year. But the town had built up a two hundred and somewhat thousand dollar reserve, so that helped offset it a little bit. I just want to make sure that it's done the right way going forward, so people can't play games with it and cause, you know, turn it into a political football. This is something that needs to be done, I think, and funded the right way. Again, I'm not concerned about the present people at all. It's just I can't speak to down the road. Because I mean, I think we see the advantage of building up that reserve this year. I mean, it, it saved that we made it by six thousand dollars this year. As a community overall. So had we not had that reserve built up, we could have had a substantial haul in all that hard work that we've put in over the last couple of years to build our fund balance back up, it would have gone right out the window. So.
That makes me feel better. That makes me feel better, too.
But again, just to confirm that everyone is comfortable with the concept of this fund overall. It's just filling, just kind of working through the specific language. We're all comfortable moving forward as the auditors recommend it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll work on that language, because I think that's good for us to know that the board is comfortable moving forward, so we can make the appropriate plans, because it's just about budget season again, so we'll be right back at it in a couple of weeks, so. Okay. All right, item number sixteen. Discussion, take possible action regarding LED streetlight conversions. We got a few little updates, Rory, do you have anything specific to report tonight, or no? You are Rory, yes?
Uh, we got the audit contract from China, which is to see what it looks like. And we reached out to other CCM, preferred vendors, people who are on the list, and kind of sales reps, or audits from that. The issue is still that we don't know for certain that the two results of the audits are what would be required, that they have all the same data, that the companies to be looking for, the end of the construction phase. And then we got to see the prices, so I'm going to do some of that.
So we're still moving along in this process, but as we said, it'll be a little slow while we work through and get all this extra data. So, any questions for Rory or Rich at this point? No, okay. Okay, item number seventeen, discussion, take possible action regarding manufacturer's exemption ordinance. Okay, so we had one comment tonight with regards to the manufacturer's exemption ordinance. Are there any issues or questions, or any changes, that any board member would like to recommend at this point? Everyone's comfortable with it as it stands? I mean, we made those, a few changes to the dates as we discussed. I think the ordinance committee, I want to speak for Karen and Nicole, but I think three of us are comfortable with what we have. So with that being said, Rich, what is the protocol? We would put it for a vote of the board at our next meeting?
At the next meeting, yes. Your charter, basically, is that you can't take action unless you're publicly interviewed in five days, and then you have to take action.
Okay. So at that point, so we take action on the, today is the sixth, the twentieth. It goes into effect twenty-one days afterwards. All right, so any other comments, thoughts? Okay, item number eighteen, executive session, where we will talk about the Supervisors Union Contract. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session at eight eleven PM to discuss the Supervisors Union Contract, and we will also invite Town Council Baturla and Town Council Holcomb. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. We'll go into executive session as stated.